Thanks. Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. I will begin the meeting. If anyone's recording, make it known. I don't know how long you've got some rather lengthy minutes for December 11th. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to review them.
I've got a problem right off the top. How can I be present in absent at the same meeting?
You're a very talented individual. You can do that.
Okay.
I assume you were at the meeting?
Yes, I was.
I think you even made a motion, didn't you?
I think I did.
Yeah, she has one. She's excellent.
She must be listening to Bob's music. She got a little confused or distracted. Oh, I know. I was here.
Anyone here to make a motion on the minutes of December 11th?
The commotion to approve the minutes for December 11th, 2017.
Has corrected the...
Has corrected second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained? I think we're all here. Okay. Have discussion about next phases of Bay Point?
Just to let you know that we're in the process of negotiating the land disposition agreement, which is essentially the purchase and sales agreement for the CETA property, the seven acres. This will be linked to the permitting. It's already been accomplished by the planning board, but we'll require new permitting for the phase that includes the seven acres of the former CETA property that we're selling to Bay Point.
Go ahead.
The issue that you'll have to be cognizant of is that there'll be 180 days listed in the agreement for the timeframe for permitting the final phases.
On what grounds? As part of the purchase and sale?
As part of the purchase and sales agreement. If you have a...
Given if they dragged their feet for 175 of them?
No.
I really can't support that condition. Given their history of not providing information and slow-rolling everything they've done, I don't know why we would sign on for that. That's my opinion, anyway.
So they're gonna come with a revised plan again?
Well, they had a concept plan that they presented to the to the planning board previously for the land, which showed housing and a new subdivision road layout for Bay Point Drive, the entrance drive.
Granted, we're not involved in the purchase and sale agreement, but I don't know. I just don't know why we'd sign on to that, given their history.
Do we know that we'll consider that in negotiations on the on the land disposition agreement?
I mean, there's parts of Phase Two and Three they haven't given us a final plan yet, doesn't it?
Right. And that was agreed to in the mediation, that the permitting would be separate from the first round. No, they haven't.
Everything's in flux.
Well, the weather since the holidays hasn't been very cooperative site work.
So did that land go out to bed or...
Yes, it did. There was an RFP that was sent out. They were the only responder, although we did have someone else that was interested in the property.
But didn't respond to the RFP?
No, because of timing.
So they've been after that piece of land since they bought that golf course, so I say we jerked them around plenty to get it.
I mean, if their work is done, I don't see why 180 days would be an issue. But past history is they've been the cause of most of the delay.
Yeah, I don't see six months for that.
We'll have a clause for extension of time in the nonresponsiveness.
How many times are we gonna get kicked in the teeth? You know, they don't play nice.
You give them a permit and they sue ya.
Yeah. They don't play nice. I'll go out of my way to make their life miserable. I didn't say that. Not miserable, but...
They do it on their own.
Is that the only way it's worded? Is they would be given an approval in 180 days, or is it...
No, that there would be action within 180 days.
So if they don't have their work done, they could be looking at a denial?
Denial, correct. It's not a full approval. It's a permit process.
Well, as long as they're clear on that.
But there's a reasonable timeframe for making a decision one way or another.
I mean, it doesn't it doesn't alter the plan that much. I don't know why it couldn't be executed. Is that it?
That's it.
That's enough. We have the continued public hearing for Spring Avenue, special permit, site plan review. Heidi Dobbins-Morse.
You also have correspondence in your file from the building department, Dave Requena, who is here tonight as well, looking cold.
This the same as you submitted before?
No, it's not. I'm giving it... There's some changes on our draw. Apparently minor changes. Just to run down a quick list. There was an issue that the rooms were labeled wrong last time. Summer Street and Fall Street. That's been corrected. The intent is never to go through Summer Street and then connect through to Fall Street. The intent has been advised to show the road extension to just pass on the saturator. We're not going to want any connection to the local area. We've added an extra water hydrant that wasn't shown on the last one due to the distance required off of Cranbury Highway. We have the private department, and they asked for a front-turning analysis and requested two inside curvers along the building in the middle, in the island, which lies 25 feet, not 30. That wasn't a function of the truck turning, but just a function that that's what they wanted. So we've done that. We've added 10 extra guest parking spots throughout the site as requested before. And in the interim, we've had a wetland biologist go out and take a look at the site. And the closest wetland he could find was approximately 232 feet, pretty much to the south. So we located... It's had one flag out there. We located it. It's not shown on this plan, but it's over 232 feet away from our southern property. That, in a nutshell, that's the summary of the changes on this.
This is a special permit application, which is a a listed use where the planning board has the special permit review function. There was the question last time about density and interpretation of the table under Section Six, Article Six of the zoning bylaw. And so additional clarification was provided by Dave Requena. But you have a couple of things to determine is interpretation of the zoning bylaw and whether or not the density is acceptable. In terms of site circulation, apparently it works.
Say it again?
In terms of site circulation, seems to work.
Question was raised last time about drainage. Has that been addressed? Charlie's not here.
No, no. Other than, no, it hasn't. We are anticipating onsite retention and infiltration.
Last time, you discussed the opportunity, option for triplexes instead of duplexes as well. Have you considered that any further? You don't want to...
There's an issue with what we're running into over in Saguar Beach, a similar project where we're doing triplexes. We're running into huge marketing issues with the middle units. Middle units don't have the first-floor master bedrooms, and they don't have garages. And then it's not an end unit. So the first six units we built over there, we still have the two middle units. These are both... All these buildings have end units, and all of them have first-floor masters with garages. So from a marketing point of view, I would prefer to go duplexes. Also, from just people living in the building, I think it's much better for the person living there if there's two end units to a building. Now, I own some other rental properties up in Air Massachusetts that are two families, and it just works out much better for the people. The triplex, I'm not 100% against it, but that brings into consideration like fire alarm systems and internal sprinkler systems and things of that nature. Now, we've already upgraded the water line coming in, the six-inch water main coming in. My brother Mark talked to the water department about that. We added the hydrant. We didn't connect the Fall Street based on that neighbor that was here the last time. It was totally against us connecting. We've met all the requirements of the fire department. I don't know. David, you got anything to add on this at all? Any input?
Unless you have any specific questions, I think I answered everything in that last letter, but I'm happy to clarify.
We met with him, and we went over a bunch of things with him.
We never saw that last letter. Do you have a copy of that letter from David?
Four of your new parking spaces appear to be not deep enough, or am I misreading?
The four, I think you're looking at a parallel parking.
Ah, thank you. And has the septic design proceeded, or is the soil conditions and so on capable of...
Has Charlie reviewed this?
When we left last time, there was discussion about...
He hasn't reviewed it yet. We're still under conceptual plan.
We were doing a discussion some way along to wrap up and define the design.
But we have spoken to the Board of Health about the ten...
Will they be site planned after this, or...
And I guess they eliminated their definition requirements two years ago, so we're gonna go forward with the design of 30 bedrooms on the site. Some towns limit you on bedroom counts, but I guess it was about two years ago that the town of Wayham did away with that.
My understanding is what they did is they did away with that requirement for three-bedroom designs, so that when we visit, design for three bedrooms per unit, but it's not a requirement to design for three. This system fits, but if there's change, it'll get revised in the final submit.
I believe that a butter, his concern was he was not approved in an accessory apartment. Isn't this the case with this guy? Did he address that since the last meeting?
The accessory unit?
Right. We had to research on why that was declined.
He didn't come into the office.
Several years ago, one of the neighbors that lives in one of the houses right next door came in to get an accessory apartment, an in-law apartment, and was denied it because of multi-use in that neighborhood. I don't know how many years ago, several years.
That was different last year.
Oh, were you? I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. I forget which house was his, but he was back here. Yeah, he was over in here somewhere. So I guess my question is a simple one. He was upset that here comes somebody with the lot that wants to put in 10 units, and he couldn't get a second unit. Separate issues. I haven't driven down there, but... So where you're ending the paving at the beginning of your lot, is it paved from Cranbury Highway down to the beginning of your lot?
Yes.
It is. All right. So you're gonna rework the match existing centerline, extension of property line, blah, blah, blah. So you'll just bring it down to the end of your lot. At the end of your lot, maybe another 100 feet to the end of Fall Street, is that paved also, or no? Or is that dirt?
It's dirt. It's wooded, actually.
The pavement ends for the... I think it's denoted on the plan where the pavement ends.
Just above the Spring Avenue label, there's a little note that says, "End of existing pavement, limit of existing pavement." That's where Spring Avenue ends right now, and it's undeveloped all the way through to Summer Street. Fall Street also ends short of his Spring Avenue.
This guy was over here.
Right. He was one of those two houses there.
I could just add one comment.
Sure.
To clarify what you just commented on, an accessory apartment is not an allowed use in the Wayham zoning bylaw in any district, all but one. This proposal is actually allowed by special permit in his district. That's the difference. I don't think we know all the facts of that last case.
Yeah, exactly.
If he hasn't come in, I mean, we don't know all the details. We don't know why it was declined. But it was not an allowed use section of the zoning district, so it would have required a use variance. Just to clarify.
Didn't he bring that before the ZVA?
He was.
Because you were on the ZVA back in those days, right?
Right. And I can't remember every single guy that comes in it.
Well, right now, it says in the MR30 that, you know, it's 30,000 square feet and 45 for a second residential unit. The curveball is it doesn't go beyond two units. If you get into three and categorize them as other residential use, it goes back to 30,000, which doesn't... Seems to be a glitch in the bylaw. I guess I'm looking for why this works, or why this earns the seal of approval, so to speak.
Well, I think the last paragraph of David's letter. I mean, he's a zoning officer, right? His professional opinion as a zoning officer means the requirements. Needs a land area requirement as well as a multi-use requirement.
They tucked them right behind... And what was the property on that? I forget. I forget.
I know it's an unusual circumstance that the planning board is... I've been doing this for 31 years, and I've never been to a planning board for something like this. It's always a ZVA, so yeah, it is a gray area, I'm sure, in a lot of respects, but I think it's still an allowed use. And even, you know, the zoning officer agrees that it is an allowed use.
It's an allowed use, but the determination of whether or not it's appropriate to the site and the proposal is the sole jurisdiction of this board as a special permit granting authority.
I understand that. I think from a aesthetic point of view, I mean, you guys, if you was on the website the last time, I mean, these are gonna be beautiful-looking units. I mean, they're gonna look really nice. I mean, it's gonna be a nice job done. It's not gonna be some, you know, throwing up there kind of a situation. I mean, we've been building for over 30 years. We've built off the line quality units. We've built over 500 houses in our careers. It's our first venture in Wayham. I understand that. But we're gonna do a great job. It's gonna be a nice project. It's gonna add value. Just to give you an example, Saguar Beach was a long history of that project. We had neighbors that didn't want us building condominiums. But now that we're in their building, it's brought the values up. A couple across the street just sold their house because of our condos, because we brought the values up in the area. New construction, nice-looking properties, no maintenance. I think the density is, I mean, five buildings on a property of this size and...
What was the other butter's concern, the woman that was here last time? She had a concern with the increased traffic?
Yeah, she didn't want it to connect through Fall Street, where Fall Street dead-ends.
Yeah.
Actually, to be honest with you, her point was counterproductive to what she was trying to make, because I'm fine with dead-ending it the way it is right now. I mean, it's gonna save... It would save us money if the project's approved.
I believe your complaint was cars would come down there and turn around in front of her house because it was dead-ended. So we thought by looping it that that would solve that, but she seemed to be against that, so we went back to not looping it.
That's the whole reason why we dead-ended it.
So the development that's near the CVS on Main Street in Wayham was built... I don't know how long it's been there, eight years. What was the property size and the number of units in there?
That was a 40B.
Yeah, that was a 40B. That was eight units.
Is that sitting on the same square footage?
Yeah. I don't remember. I just remember he wanted twice as many units, and we got him down to like eight, so...
Yeah, I think if you went by the 40B standard, this would be probably sized for 16 units if you went by the 40B standard, close to 16.
The precedence we're gonna set is every subdivision, I can go in and buy two lots and put 10 units in. You're gonna see that sprinkle all over town.
Well, that's kind of my point when I look at these other large parcels around here. I'm just looking for... You know, I have no reason to doubt that you don't build a good project. And I kind of agree with you that the density is not out of line with the rest of the existing development of the... the rest of the existing development or the of the early stages of the existing development. But I'm kind of looking for something to hang my hat on here that says that this earns the special permit. And you said those are, they're each two bedroom units?
Well, technically, they're three bedroom units. Cause we're designing a septic system for thirty bedrooms right now. So you have a first floor master which everybody wants. I mean, we're we're even seeing people in their forties want first floor masters now. And then there's two bedrooms upstairs where normally people use one of them as a guest room and then they use the other one for like an office or a TV room or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we're, we're, what we're seeing marketing wise in Sagamore Beach is, is you know, condos are condos. You're either gonna get a first time buyer or someone downsizing.
Woman's house right here.
You don't really see a whole lot in between anymore with the condo market. That's what we've been seeing.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a commercial business off of Spruce?
Yes, there is.
What is that?
Uh, Volkswagen Repair was the bug shop, something like that. All on that side of the road, like five hundred feet back is commercial. Long twenty-eight.
Not anymore.
Well, it was, that's when that building was constructed. He's the guy that lived the prior, uh, reason he got his permit was he had a tractor trailer business, or a truck business.
Oh, that's what the.
Yeah. And then it was sold to a sticker guy and then the bug shop showed up last.
I mean, David, David refers to in his second to the last paragraph about that use table in section three twenty-one. Um, it states that a new five or more family dwelling is allowed by special permit in the MR thirty zoning. And that you guys are the special permit granting authority for that.
I don't think there's any issue with that. I think everybody agrees in agreement. That's the case.
I mean, we're trying to work with town, we wanna be friendly partners, so you guys tell us.
Would your project work for you if it were four units?
You know what the four buildings?
Four buildings. The, the, uh, first of all, I I don't find, I don't have a problem with the the density. I'm more concerned about the neighbors and the impact of the to to them.
Let me ask you this question, cause one of the things that I've been thinking about is if that question came up. What if we did this?
Make this a park.
Park, for what?
You know what I mean.
Green space?
The four buildings would would work.
What if we did this? What if we eliminated that front building? And then we added a third unit to one of the sides, so we end up at nine units. But we eliminate that middle unit in the front, closest to Spring Out, and we make one of these a three unit building. So we end up at nine units instead of the ten. So picture picture this building gone right here. And then we either add a, a third unit to one of these, one of these two, wherever it works out the best. So now this is totally gone, so you have basically four buildings with nine units.
So one of them is the triplex that isn't as valuable?
Yeah. Ed's gonna move into eleven unit for me. That way we eliminate one of the buildings, our front building, and then everything's on the perimeter, like a sunny circle.
Like a little compound.
That would create more green space in the middle there.
That center building, where where's the front doors on that?
Front doors.
Is it facing to the middle?
Yeah, facing to the middle.
So folks coming off of Spring Out are looking at the back of that house, that's the backyard?
Right. That was one of the things that I was thinking about.
Can that be reversed, so those drives come in?
Hey, he just gave it up.
What's that?
He just gave it away.
He just gave it back.
Yeah.
I've never seen that before, by the way. Same boy, I just, I just gave something up and he just gave it back to me.
Well, he asked you.
Yeah, it definitely could be flipped. It definitely could be flipped where we, the entrances to those would be coming off of Spring Out.
Because, well, the, I mean, the density, I mean, the the purpose is one thing, but the aesthetics to a a single family neighborhood. But we've got mixed use in this neighborhood, so there's some commercial uses that are happening there as well, so. To me, it it looks like you're pulling in, now it would look like you're pulling into a a subdivision, per se, because you're looking at that back of that house.
Yeah, but it creates another problem, though. It creates these other units looking at the backyard of that building. Look, and I'm I'm ready to give up a unit and go to nine units, I really would. And that way you eliminate that building, we create more green space in the middle, we add one unit on, make one of them a triplex. And now you got this green space out front and it looks aesthetically, it looks better. I think from a marketing point of view, I understand what you're saying, but I think it would it would harm us. These, all these people looking in the backyard of that building. That's why we faced it inward like that. But from a Spring Out point of view.
That's gotta be the most
Yeah, they're looking at.
Least desirable unit because of that positioning anyways.
I think it'd look better, honestly. I'm really, I'm really, I'm willing to give up a unit for that.
And how would you address the the open space?
Well, we, we'd have to have Ed lay it out, but, I mean, basically, we would just keep the same flow.
Mm-hmm.
And now this area in here, maybe we move the septic system into this area and create this green space in here.
My first thought would be just that, move that septic system over, get it out.
You're gonna do one common leach field, is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And we make, and remove that parallel parking also, if we could pull in there.
Yeah, that would probably help you with your septic.
I hate to really admit it, but you you got a good point.
No, I think your site plan would improve a lot.
It would definitely aesthetically and green space wise and everything else wise, I'm, you know, I'd I'd be willing to cut one unit out to do that, for sure.
No, it would be nice if if you did not increase the size of the other four. Can you do without two units?
If if I didn't just get the twenty-seven thousand dollar estimate from the water department and a thirty thousand dollar from a bill from a gas company and extending this roadway. Trust me, I'm a numbers guy, I've gone over these numbers a million times. I I.
Because to your point, having a middle unit is is, it's not as marketable as the the.
No, but it's still a unit.
Yeah.
It's still a unit.
But again, the size, now you're making a much larger structure and probably will be quite a bit larger than the neighboring hu- than the than the, uh, neighboring structures.
It's still gonna.
If if you, if you could do your numbers and see if you can keep the four duplexes and eliminate the middle one and have a nice green space. It's, I, the value, the value would be there.
I don't think, I don't think you really, we're not really adding that much to the footprint by adding one more. Those units are only twenty, fourteen, thirty-four, thirty-four feet wide with the garages.
Spruce.
That's not a lot.
You're going to add twenty feet, right?
Twenty feet plus the garage is fourteen, so that'd be thirty-four.
Thirty-four, that's a, that's a large piece of mass.
Looks like.
Well, we, well, the other thing is we could eliminate the garage. And just go to a middle unit twenty feet wide like I have now over there.
Directly across from that garage, there's some.
Sagamore Beach.
And where's the street is up further.
Uh.
Right, it's coming this way. They're dead ending it here.
Yeah.
The way.
So you kind of gotta turn this.
You end up with two end units with garages, middle unit with a fire support and a fire with no garage.
Garage here, it'll still be wooded.
Isn't this the street back here?
Ten foot side setback back there?
The street is that, that's spring. That's spruce.
That creates a rear setback.
That's Fall Street.
Ten, you have ten side.
You can see the dotted line, the dotted line around the property is the
So there's Fall Street.
Is the setback line.
He's gonna go down building on below. Cut this road in, put all this stuff in here.
Might, it might be advantageous to have the, if we went to nine units, we have to lay it out a little bit, but it might be advantageous to add it over here. This is like no man's land anyways over here, instead of doing anything with this one.
What's over here?
It's a big parcel away, probably owns just one. I'll see, that's it.
Or you could pull that, pull side of the road and put it behind it.
Right. I agree, I think it's better, I think it's a better way of going the line, I really do. And then everybody's looking out at Spring Out. People going by, I've seen the backyard of that other building. I don't know how many times a developer wants to give up a unit that easily, but I see your point.
What's the square footage of each unit?
Um. Right now, they're right around seventeen hundred, could you get that first floor master? With the ma- with the bathroom, and then you get seven point seven fourteen, it's right around seventeen hundred, sixteen seventy-five.
No. I don't think so.
They gave us a.
Let's see if they have a picture.
It would be the s- the same plan that you have here, or similar to it.
Let me show you a picture. I have a picture of a three unit. So you've got a good idea. This is two three units connected, so just think of the three, three units. So you got the two end units with garages, and then you got the middle unit with a fire support. So that's what you'd basically be getting, one of these three unit buildings. You had a website last time I asked you.
Yeah, I can pull it up again. What what is the web again?
Um, oceanpinesagamorebeach.com. So the middle unit would have a nice fire support in front with no garage. And also two hundred units with garages, and then the middle unit would just have a fire support and a garage, and the three units.
I think eliminating this makes them happier too, right?
These are the units we're building in Sagamore Beach right now, so it'd be the same.
I'm just doing some sketches in my head of similar arrangements in town now. You know, in in a condo arrangement, it's it's not inconsistent with what we, what we have out there.
It's fairly common and it's it's actually low density for condominium.
Now, the procedure, I know it was advertised as special permit and site plan review.
Yeah, special permit and site plan review. But the request was to get the the concept right before proceeding to the detail than. And the design.
I mean, we can update the plan like I just spoke about, with the nine units. Ed will get it to work and fit, move the septic system into that front area where that building is. And show all the parking, show the septic in there. Everything else is pretty much, like we said, we talked to the water department, talked to the fire department, talked to David. Have the wetlands expert go up there. You put that on the plan.
No, we have to, and we have to adjust the drainage. We have to adjust the size of drainage and.
And you may have to change the drainage to accommodate the septic system if you were to move it up into that area.
Correct, correct.
Well, you're also eliminating some roof areas, so.
Yeah.
What's the options for the property if this wouldn't go in a single family dwelling?
There's enough room for a two family.
So we would exchange this for a two family complex or two single family homes?
I would assume that what they would do is is, uh, subdivide the properties in additional subdivision, but with seventy thousand square feet. Minimum lot size is is thirty for.
So we could end up with two single family homes with detached three car garages on the same parcel of land? Let's end up with four structures.
It'd be, it'd be two structures, one would be.
Two primary structures, nothing?
Two primary dwellings.
Mm-hmm.
And if they opted to put detached two car garages on there, we'd end up with four structures on the same parcel of land. Density wise. So I think it, to to me, it's not so much the building volume, it's it's the population that this will now hold. This population will now hold what are these typically four family units?
It's not what we're seeing, but.
I mean, uh, four member families?
We haven't seen those at all.
Just couples?
It's it's singles and downsizing couples.
So ten units, twenty people?
And then we even have seasonal people. Like we got a woman that's buying from Las, she's buying a middle unit from Las Vegas, and she's out there six months and here six months. And we got one that's Florida six months, up here six months. Hard to say, really. We're not seeing any families, we're not seeing any, it's it's not what it used to be, the market for condos.
I mean, in my opinion, there was not great. I mean, in my opinion, there was not great opposition from the abutters from the last meeting. I mean, the biggest concern that was raised was the wetland concern, which you think you at least addressed, or began to address that, uh, in eliminating that as a concern. The gentleman that was here was, you know. He didn't pursue the issue, we don't know what the issue was, but it's two different, these are apples and oranges, th- these two arguments. The, the woman that was at the last meeting, her concern was traffic circulation or traffic increase, which I don't see. There is some volume increase here getting into these new structures, but I don't see, from the aerial view, how that's going to actually impact her any more than, um. The current circumstance with her.
Well, no one's gonna be able to go out Falls Street under this scenario, she's on Falls Street.
Yeah.
So. To keep this moving along, we, we'd have to, uh. Do the review of road construction, have those plans submitted. And, uh.
They have to be specified in accordance with the subdivision rules and regulations.
But we have nothing from site plan other than.
Right.
This, so we need to, we need to clean that up and finish that procedure.
Well, I think if we, if we can agree with the, uh, proponent here about what the project is gonna be, then we can get the details that make the most sense, that design.
Well, we're all in agreement to, well, I, I, I think, in my mind anyways, we're eliminating the center building and making the far left a triple unit. Is what, is what the new concept is here.
Well, you're gonna look at, play with the plans a little and see which unit would be.
Right. I'm not in favor of nine units. I think they take out unit nine and ten, they keep the four duplexes. And I think that they should pave the road to the end of their property line and hit the head of Falls Street, similar to they hit the head of Spruce Street. That's my feeling on it. That's, uh. That's it. Yeah, I like drains. They can do their septic, they can do all the road design, bring it back and do whatever, but, um. We suggested, uh, I think, I think you did actually, the last time they were here, Mr. Chairman, to make three, three units, which would have been nine. And they, they didn't want to do that, and tonight he had an explanation why, because the minute, middle, middle units weren't selling, so I can understand that. So I think if you just take out the front building, redesign all their drainage and their septic, pave the road to the end of their property line, and call it a day.
Would that be a big challenge for you to connect with Spruce? Is that just more asphalt?
Spruce or Fall?
Spruce is connected.
I'm sorry, Falls Street.
Well, we were trying to take into consideration the neighbors and what they had to say, so we thought by doing that, we'd eliminate.
You didn't say to, you just, what you said is go to the end of the property line. Currently, like, we would just extend it to the end of the property line, right?
Right.
From where it is now.
You, you can address the, the corner of Falls Street similar to you address the corner of Spruce Street, where you, where you paved the, just the edge of that, the entrance way there, and that's it.
The, the difference there is that, um, Spruce Street already connects Falls Street and is quite a bit short, if you look at ends, just where the Fall, the F starts, that's where that pavement ends right now. So if we extended that pavement to the end of our property line, it still doesn't connect, there's actually a ton of large.
Do you have rights to that?
It's on.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been down there, Dave, you been down there? You, you, you been down there? Look at this.
I don't know if they'd have rights to Falls Street, I'd have to research that and the.
I see where they've left the pavement back. My, my gut feeling is that they should pave that to the, to the back of their property line, but if, if, if Falls Street is not paved, similar to Spruce Street is, where they. Where they address it by, by paving just into the road, just, just developing the, the, the edge of the road, you could do the same thing there as what I'm saying, just, just to the edge of it. To me would be a better, would be a better product. But you guys can weigh in on that.
I, I would just question if they have rights to that, that's, would be my only, if they have rights to Falls Street. We can do the research on the title and see.
Well.
Unless you've already done it, do you have rights of access into Falls Street?
I don't, I'm not sure. I, my attorney did do, is our due diligence, and I don't remember, because it wasn't.
So you're gonna, you're gonna dig up and rebuild Spring Ave. there to, to whatever the. Requirements are. Just bring it down to the end of your property then.
I mean, I don't have any objection to bring the pavement down to the end of the property, but to give up two units and do that at the same time, it's a hard number to swallow, to be honest with you, because then we're gonna have to extend some other stuff. I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue, I think we can make it happen with the nine units. But losing two units and doing it, it's, it's a pretty substantial amount of money.
Have you bought this property yet?
I have it under agreement.
Under agreement, okay.
Ah, twenty foot wide. Time's a dragon. Any comments from you? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here this evening who wants to comment? Court members, thoughts?
John, what, what is your theory with just reducing two units altogether, just to reduce the volume of, of movement in the area?
Yeah, pretty much, you, you know, it's, once you, once you add another thirty somewhat feet to the end of this, now that building has to move in. So, so they were adjusting, they were adjusting a lot to, to, to get a unit in there that their concern is of selling, so. I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a project worth doing, eight units, they'll, they'll be all right.
Well, one of the things you could do is, is look at what, what would be, uh, the revised plan with the, uh, the nine units in it, and, and make a determination as to, uh. The character and the quality of the development.
I mean, does it really make that much of a difference to you if it's nine units? If we extend the pavement to the end of the property line and have more green space in the middle, I mean, financially, it makes a big difference to us. Because we already know what the numbers are to improve it.
Mm-hmm.
To this point.
What, what would be the opposition to adding? So what John was saying, his concern is we, we move closer to the property line down here on adjusting this, but what happens if you add a third unit to these back?
Well, we, we'll, we'll figure out what's the best way aesthetically, we could add it to any one of those units, it doesn't matter. It's.
Our initial, uh.
Depends on the parking.
The initial intent was to, to get the density, to talk to you people about the density and how many units we could do, and then move forward with the site review, we know we have to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, you're talking apples and oranges, if you had two units, or if you have nine units, what, how much leeway there is, how much, you know, room there is. So we're trying to get an idea on the density before we can proceed with the, the, uh, site plan review.
Well, I'm just. I'm not totally opposed to the nine, you know, it, just make it look right. You can make it fit, maybe if the end units, maybe if they kicked out and followed the property line, or instead of being square with the roadway.
Hitty cornered or something, I don't know, Ed would have a better.
It might, that might help you fit things in a little better.
We're definitely gonna have to play it a little bit, so if it works out for parking and everything else, but. If we can come to some resolution, like my brother said about, if we can go forward with a nine unit plan, and I'll extend the pavement down to the end of the property line. And we'll come back with a nine unit plan with a septic in the middle, with a green space in the middle, and we'll get it all drainage designed. So we can do like a full site review.
You just, uh, remember too, that, that there's not much green that can go on over the septic, I mean, I'm not sure how large of an area, so bear in mind that. It'll take some creative landscaping to. To make it look good, because you're not going to be able to plant anything over the septic.
It's usually very green.
But look, if.
If it doesn't work right.
It'll be green year round.
Well, we did.
But it, it'll be an improvement, it's, it's.
Yeah, we did similar to this common system on Sagamore Beach, and we did like perimeter planting.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, could, could this be classified as a forty B?
Oh, don't say that word.
No, it has to have a subsidy. It has to be subsidized to be a forty B.
Yeah, but then they'd ask for twenty units, so.
I wouldn't even come before you for a forty B.
I've, I've heard that from a lot of guys.
I just spent seventeen years doing forty Bs, I'm done. Nobody can qualify anymore, nobody can. Short story, when we started building forty Bs seventeen, eighteen years ago, we would hold lotteries. We'd get a hundred people show up, and for three units, people would leave crying they didn't get a unit. The last eight years, when we did forty B drawings, we were lucky to get three people show up, and we were very lucky if one qualified. That's how bad it's gotten with the regulations for these first time home buyers.
Is there a reason your phone keeps flashing, or something?
It's trying to blind us, put us in a trance.
Taking your picture.
It's seeing, it's seeing nine, nine, nine.
Subliminal messages.
Hypnosis, guys. So yeah, forty Bs, we, we built forty five affordable houses in Born that aren't born. I'm done with that.
Where, where was this at?
Buzzards Bay off of St. Keyway, Nightingale Pond Estates and Pilgrim Mines, we built almost two hundred total houses up in there. I even had to get the regulations changed because you weren't allowed to sell to a single person. And at the very end, the last affordable house that we just sold last year was to the male person who was single, that did the root in the neighborhood.
A lot of that had to do with the economy too, and, um, it was, you know, I think we sold to two or three single people towards the end, when they allowed the.
For a hundred.
Change the deed rider.
Hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, they were getting a three hundred and seventy five thousand dollar house, and it was like guaranteed to get somebody.
Anything more, uh?
Not, my, my feeling is that, I, I'm not drawing a conclusion, but I'd like to see what this would look like with the elimination of the seven, the center building, reposition on the lot. I think it, it's just speculation in each of our minds right now what this would look like, but if you demonstrate it by the numbers, it would give the abutters another opportunity, we, I mean, they had an opportunity to be here tonight. You know, a couple of weeks from now, um, they have a good opportunity, if, if there's not any great opposition from the neighborhood, and this thing makes sense mathematically and density wise, they could satisfy the green space in the center. I think at, at least I'd be able to, to come to a conclusion on whether this makes sense. I think it's consistent with the density of the neighborhood. We could be looking at the same square footage of building in two, two single family, um, estates, but to John's point, there's a, there's a volume consideration. With this.
Comments over here?
I'd like to see it with the four buildings. Green space. I think the density is fine.
So we're gonna, we're gonna come back, show them the nine units, all the drainage, everything. Get everything on the plan, everything, so you can see it. We'll figure out the green space, we can show some, we'll show some plantings on there too.
It would, it would help to show the actual footprint too.
These, right now are.
No, your, your articulation.
Oh yeah, of course, of course.
Because that'll make a difference visually too.
Any thought to staggering these units, uh, I know that raises your cost, but, uh, where you putting the three together, you could offset them a little, maybe get the garage in.
The thing is, if you look at it, the building that I just showed you, and if you go on Ocean Pines Sagamore Beach dot com and see the color picture, when you look at that three unit building, that unit in the middle is a farmers porch. So it kinda looks like.
Gives it the effect.
Gives it that effect. Because the other two have garages, so they're already bumped out slightly, the ends are already bumped out slightly, and the middle one setbacks a couple of feet.
No, I was just thinking if you could get a garage into that middle unit, you might make it more marketable.
I like the way you think. Yeah, but I don't know if we could fit it on, I will have, we'll see if we can, if we can, we could definitely stagger it.
Does it, explain the wetlands one more time, your wetland specialist has looked at it, has conservation chimed in on this?
Not yet, we, we're, we just got informed that, who sent the letter, somebody?
Ken, Mr..
Yeah, I sent it over to, uh, conservation to get confirmed.
There's a copy of, there's eight copies up there from the wetland specialist.
He sent it over to conservation already.
Would we hear back from conservation before they came back in front of us again?
Yeah, yes, we could, uh, I guess it depends on when you want to come back. Because we, we have to extend the, uh, the hearing.
Everybody said in the past, uh, further up their street, uh, was it Mr. DeVaz, his backyard, he said he, he's had flooding problems. I know further up on Summer Street, where the designated playground is, that definitely, you know, floods out. And when the guy, when your wetlands guy said he's two hundred and thirty feet in, we flagged it. That's, that's, like I said, I, I think, uh, that definitely should go before our conservation committee and have them look at it, because.
There's a big difference of water and wetlands.
Drainage.
Drainage, the difference, like wetland vegetation.
Right.
You can have water at high time of the year, but it's not considered wetlands.
Have you done any test pits yet?
No, we're not, Charlie brought it up in our last meeting, some, some concerns, and one was high ground water, and it's.
Well, Char- Charlie knows their subdivision quite well, because Charlie's done a lot of work in here.
And we understand that, we know that if we, once we get to density, we're gonna have to do that, we're gonna have to get part tests done for drainage, designing, and all.
Any lift?
We made sure though, that before, the gentleman who's, Brad Holmes, has been before this board before, nobody's done quite a bit of work on Sagamore Beach. And he, we had the north property line, uh, excuse me, the east property line and the south property line completely staked out before he even went out. He was able to get out last Monday, I think it was, before the snow hit, um, picked up the new year, and he said he's done a lot of test pits, really investigated the area. Uh, he came back, and his first comment to me was that I didn't find any wetlands on me. He came back and his first comment to me was that I didn't find any wetlands on the, on your locusts. I called him up, I said, I don't care about the locusts, I can't let them off locusts. He goes, no, 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 I, I looked, and he said you're well over a hundred feet, we were able to get outside and get that wetland flag located. And that's how I can say that wetland flag is two-hundred-and-thirty-two feet, it's like two-thirty-one point eight to that property line.
To the south or east?
Yeah, to, uh, this, this way, to the south.
Southeast, you see it.
Is that green line on there?
Mm-hmm.
But on your plan, it shows that green line.
I thought.
There is, if you look at the GIS, there is a wetland that is shown that is tremendous on ways, kind of more or southeast away from the site. I think that's the wetland that the Concon was living in, in part with. But yeah, there's, he's the expert.
So you're gonna come back with what nine looks like in. Landscaping.
We're gonna get some test pits done out there, we'll get some test pits done out there. When is, uh, you mean next month?
It's second and fourth each month.
Second and fourth?
It's the twelfth, February twelfth or February twenty-sixth.
So the consensus is you're sending them back to come back with a nine-unit design?
Yeah.
We're not gonna vote for it, so skip that.
So we're looking at, the end of the month would be the, what, is that January?
February, February twenty-sixth.
And then next month would be?
February twelfth.
The twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
Assuming you can't get it done in two weeks.
Go for the twelfth, and if we need to do, we can ask for an extension.
We can, yeah, we can continue.
I'm not sure what the timeline is to get a part test set up with the boys out there and the weather.
Plus the weather, even.
I think you're gonna have a hard time doing a part test right now.
It's actually the season they want it.
When they want it, don't, December through March.
Be interesting to see what they do with dick's and bits back there, it's like I said, my big concern is the water, I have a water table in that area, and.
What's your opinion on the density?
I, I think the four buildings, I think it'll, it'll work, you know, the buildings aren't bad looking, it's gonna be a condo, so it's not gonna be rentals, renters in there. They're gonna have a condo association, so they'll basically police themselves.
The four buildings with the nine units?
Yeah.
Extension.
You guys are creative, I'm sure you can make it work.
We're at an extension of time, get your signature on this.
So it has to be. The decision has to be done sixty days after the continuation of the public hearing, the close of the hearing.
I was gonna say the close, not the continuation.
Close, yeah.
Uh, so I'd be looking for a motion to continue to February twelfth.
All right, I move that we continue the meeting to February twelfth, that the applicant will study the plan with nine units. Landscape and architectural footprints.
Chair second?
This is second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four, one, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Governor.
That, um, that's also zoning, uh, commercial, right, zone, commercial zone also? No commercial use?
David, did you get my phone message? Did you get my phone message? Well, I left it with since Sandy? Last week.
Do you want to go over these things, or do you want to? Just to remind everybody to look them over?
Uh, wanted, I wanted some decisions on the, on the articles for the, for town meeting take forward. And. One is that, one that I think warrants some discussion is, is how to. To include recreational, non-medical marijuana establishments. I sent around to the board members the, the new regulations, the draft regulations that just came out. Under nine thirty-five CMR five hundred. And in those regulations, it's fairly specific about setbacks and, and distances from schools, churches, et cetera. And. But it also says, even though they, they have the state regulations which are controlling the, the use. That they're only allowed as approved by the local regulations. So suggesting that, that you, we add to section three fifty a use definition for recreational, non-medical marijuana establishment. As defined. According to state regulations, with limitation on the number of, of these establishments. That it should always be less than twenty percent of the number of package store licenses issued by the Wareham Board of Selectment. And the establishment is otherwise in conformance with the state regulations. Which would, would mean that it has, it conforms to all those standards and criteria of, of citing. And security is, is appropriate to the state regulations.
How many package stores do we have?
Thirteen.
I was gonna ask that, that's all we have, Alan?
So there would be two, potentially two establishments based on this criteria of twenty percent.
Now, the package store number is based on population?
Not really, because in Wareham, we have a, a number, you know, that's based that way, but then remember we have special requests to do that. Over and above what we have by population. You have wines and more, you know, that's a special, that's not a regular. You have the new liquor and more, which is the old Rosebrook, which is another one, which is over the original ones, we've probably got.
Well, the.
You have at least three.
The latest one, the one, the Toby Road one was an existing liquor license going back prior to Rosebrook.
Yeah, but I think the Rosebrook, one of them, they used a couple for Rosebrook, but I think the one that, that, that liquor store was actually listed as a separate. You know, through the state, as a, not, not as just a transfer, it actually has a, a new additional one.
Really, I thought they took that from the old package store down at Milpon.
Yeah, but they also did, remember the ninety-nine restaurant got a liquor license in there too.
Right, and so did, and so did the hotel, but the ninety-nine, I thought transferred the license from one end of town to the other.
Yeah, but I think the, I think the package store license in Rosebrook was a new one, and I know the, the, the mall was a new one.
The one at Rosebrook, no.
That should be the Milpon one.
Yes, yeah, that was a move.
The Milpon package store is, is the Rosebrook package store, new liquor license went to the hotel.
I have to go back and look, cause something happened with the Rosebrook one. Ended up being a state-approved it.
It did, for the hotel.
No, they, we had, the state approved for there, but there's also, there was another one, plus they moved one over. I'll go back and look, I think it's one there, but there's, there's at least your wines and more is number one anyways, you know, cause that was, that is the mall. That's a package store there.
Okay, anyway, number one.
Look, we're confusing foreign license with.
Yeah, no, foreign license is different.
Package store.
Yeah.
Where, where did the twenty percent calculation come from, was that a suggestion or?
That's, that's from the state regulations.
Yeah, the state has that in there.
State is mandating the twenty percent?
No, they're not mandating, they're giving it as an option.
It all might be moot, just so everybody understands, because the US Attorney is, because of what's happened in Washington. They're still talking about enforcing, you know, the law.
The federal law, yeah.
Which says this is all legally.
All right, yeah.
And Massachusetts was singled out as possible, they're enforcing that law. I was out, when I was away on vacation, California and Nevada.
I like the guy in Colorado, and I'm gonna hold up all the nominations when I.
Basically, those two states as of January first had, you know, the retail marijuana sales starting. And there was a lot of conversation about whether or not the government was gonna come in and do something.
There's a, I believe there's a gentleman in Oregon doing federal time because he had five acres of pot growing.
Cannabis. It's cannabis, George.
What do you need us to do, Ken?
Could be up to you now, though.
I want to know if you want to proceed with the, with the getting this on the, the town meeting warrant? And hold a public hearing to, to complete our required processing of the.
I would ask that the board do that, because you want to have that protection no matter what.
Right.
Even if all of a sudden the government decides to enforce the rules over above us, there'll be, there'll be, there'll be the Supreme Court, the states versus the federal government, cause this is all based on money.
CG and CS.
So I suggested also that we include this in the use table, section three twenty. So that there is a, a listing in the table for recreational marijuana. For us, as a special use within the commercial districts, general commercial and strip commercial, and prohibited within all other districts.
If you do that, Ken, my question would be, is the medical marijuana that was approved in the institutional, you're supposed to have first shot if they want recreational, how does that then work?
Then there'd be also institutional as well.
That's not what you just said.
No, I didn't, but I just changed, based on input.
No, the five hundred feet of a school works that.
Nice being quick on your feet.
Five hundred feet of a school. In the state regulation, or do we agree with what's said?
Yeah. No, we don't, what we can do is, what I'll, I'll do is, I'll take the, the regulations, all hundred and seventy-seven pages, a hundred and seven pages. And pull out what the criteria are for citing of facilities. And use that, and you can, you can compare that, and if you find it, anything missing, we can add, add to that.
Okay.
That criteria.
So we need a public hearing before.
Before town meeting.
Yeah. Do we have to, could we go to ten percent?
You could be more restrictive if you want.
Well, that would be one, not yet.
But that'd be a question you'd have.
Well, twenty percent of thirteen is two point six, so is that two stores or is it three stores?
Two, has to be less than twenty percent.
Less than twenty percent.
Right.
Could a, could a holder of a liquor license also obtain this license and cojoin the two parts?
I don't know.
Because one of my thoughts are that, that we, that shouldn't.
One-stop shopping.
It's one-stop shopping, but it's just, it's gonna just increase the, I guess the.
It'd be a separate.
The magnetism.
It'd have to be a separate business, separate entity, can't be, can't be cojoining license.
If it's anything like the medicinal. Sales, you wouldn't want them, the, the owners wouldn't want them together. The money has to be segregated, the entrance, everything has to be segregated from everything else, and, and security and.
Everything.
It's, it's a nightmare.
Okay. It's next on your hit parade.
So, so we'll proceed with that and you will, on the public hearing, also there's, you know, to, to make this worthwhile. Is the acceptance of the state law authorizing the imposition of the three percent total sales tax. On, on the recreational marijuana sales.
Is that something we would do in a zoning article, or that something?
No, that, that'd be a, a general.
That would be the selectmen's responsibility to do that, wouldn't it, oppose that?
So, next one on the list is, if we're, if we're done with recreational marijuana. Is Article thirteen, non-conforming to law's uses and structures. I handed out a, a draft of the section previously. We can still proceed with something less than a wholesale redo of Article thirteen. We can take specific criteria in there. As a way to address. Or we can try to do the, the whole of the Article thirteen for this town meeting. And the question is, how much work do you think you want to, uh, put into this?
Well, I, I think wasn't a big part of this. To en- enable a little more discretion. With the building department.
Correct.
On approving.
Correct.
So, so my feelings are, is that we should spend our energy crafting the word to, to delegate that authority over to them, so. Is it realistic, you can tell all of Article thirteen between now and?
I don't know, what do you think, Dave? Is it realistic to do Article thirteen incomplete?
Yes.
Almost that change, there's a yes, since, since Dave is doing a lot of the work on this one.
It's almost done.
So it'd be just a matter of reviewing your work, agreeing with it, some explanation.
He's been working on this for a while.
It's actually already been in front of the board.
Yeah, we, we gotta.
Article thirteen's been in front of the board and reviewed, and we're just doing grammatical changes now. That, that's just about it, formatting issues.
Town council's already reviewed it as well.
What's that?
Town council's worked with it as well.
Right.
Here's, here's a copy, you got a copy?
Yeah, so, so is your question then is to accept the revisions to Article thirteen?
To go through the whole, complete revision of Article thirteen.
But the revision's been done?
Not completely.
Okay.
But it will be in time.
Yes, it could be in time.
Which is about twenty years past due date.
No comment.
I don't have that in front of me, so.
Are you want a copy?
You have these minutes, you want me to leave these in my approved minutes?
Yeah.
Do you have another spot?
Keep the approved minutes in there.
We did talk a little about the eighteen months as opposed.
We did talk a little about the eighteen months, as opposed. I wonder if there's a way, a mechanism to grant extensions, because I have seen cases where the insurance company hasn't finished their, had made determination within eighteen months.
Oh, for a replacement of a.
And people have lost their rights of rebuild because the insurance company was going through some contortion and held them up.
All right, we can look at that on the, on the draft.
So you, it's almost done, or you get a clean copy and we'll be all set to do all of that?
Yeah. So, keep, to keep things rolling, and the, next one is on drive-throughs. Where the existing, the existing bylaw allows non-food businesses in the general commercial district to have drive-throughs. So pharmacies and banks can have a drive-through. Question is, and you have a referral before you tonight, is to allow restaurant drive-throughs in the general commercial or in all commercial districts where restaurants are allowed by special permit? This was a request of the Board of Appeals, that there be a reconsideration for restricting drive-throughs for restaurants.
As I said to you earlier, what I would want to see is what, what's the criteria for granting a special permit? I think we need some, we need to lay the ground rules so people know upfront.
I started to write down some of those special permit criterias, such as the idea that internal circulation is bound to be safer cars than pedestrians. Well-defined lanes, minimal crossing of lanes. That the, and then the site access to this, to that location. Have enough space internally so that vehicles can enter and queue up. Vehicles and, and exiting can pause and queue for the exit. So that there's no backing up onto, within the site or onto the street. And trash receptacle is available for disposal from the vehicle as well. And we can add to the, those criteria if you think there's additional issues that need to be addressed. Otherwise, we have the, the health and safety criteria that special permits get, get app, get applied. So you had, you had received some correspondence on this from Claire Smith, email address to the planning board, saying that this was not a good idea based on the previous decisions that had been done, to go back against.
Yeah, they don't want anything in West Wareham. Is this the only proposed drive-in, drive-through right now in town?
Not really.
It's the first one. There, there's been other, there've been other inquiries about drive-through for restaurants.
For, for West Wareham?
For West Wareham and for East Wareham.
It's nothing to do with East Wareham, this was all about West Wareham.
You would have had the Sonic, would have been a special permit, that was for East Wareham.
Quick glue bus?
Yes, yes.
So.
And you also have a bank that was supposed to go into the Wareham marketplace, that wanted a drive-through, and there was a problem with that as well. Bank did not come in.
Wareham Marketplace, where?
That's where all these is.
Toby Road and twenty-eight. We, we, we know the mess coming out into the Cranberry Highway right now. I, I can't, I'm gonna just keep drilling this every single meeting. To come out of this Wareham marketplace, straight ahead is the exit, main exit point for Walmart. Cars will be crossing five lanes trying to go get a burger out of Wendy's right now. There, this has to be corrected. And, and there's not even enough distance to put a light in there right now. There, there has to be a, a major consideration how everything is merging in these two plazas.
When you go.
Anything can be approved.
When you go ahead and do these type of things, as you add to the area, you do a traffic study, and you make the requirements of the new people coming in to take care of the issue. You don't just open it up and do it.
Yeah.
You have to remember Walmart is supposed to review their traffic, was it, George, two years or five years? They were required to go back and review the traffic, and if they have to, they had to redo the road. There was a stipulation, and the same thing.
In the special permit, there's a timeframe for review.
And the. And the same thing's gonna, and that's coming up fairly soon. The other piece is that, again, you have the Wareham marketplace. There really wasn't a traffic study done there, per se. Anybody else coming in there, as you add to the mix, you're gonna have to require that. But as of right now, that all goes before the ZBA.
I thought they, I thought they had a traffic guy when they came in for their permit, no? Because I thought he said something to the effect, oh, there'll be no more traffic than usual.
Yeah, which we know was wrong.
Right, yeah, I just thought I'd throw that in.
Can I back up a minute, Dave? On non-conforming lots. You said for lots held in common ownership or under common control may be buildable for single or two-family. You mean combined or individual lots?
You're gonna have to read it for me, yeah.
For lots that.
Provisions on the Mass General law that allow you to build on lots held in common ownership.
Says for lots that were held in common ownership or under common control, said lots may be buildable for single or two-family residential use, provided that the lots have seventy-five hundred square feet and seventy-five feet of furniture.
Right, that's Mass General law.
Right.
That's allowed on a Mass General law. If you have lots in common ownership, they have to be seventy-five hundred and seventy-five. Without common ownership, it's five thousand square feet and fifty feet of furniture.
Okay.
If they are held in common ownership, you can't combine more than three lots in a row. Or you can exempt individual lots, more than three lots in a group.
I guess that's where you're losing me.
So, so if you have lots. You have undersized lots that are held in common control, as long as they're, as long as they meet that requirement, seventy-five hundred and the seventy-five feet of furniture, they can individually be buildable, they don't have to merge. If they don't meet that requirement, and they're held in common ownership, they merge under the Mass merger doctrine. And they have to be considered one lot for zoning purposes.
If, well, if it was, say they had fifteen thousand square feet, could they break that into two lots?
No. No, because it's already non-conforming. You can never take a non-conforming lot and make it more non-conforming.
But if you have common ownership.
Yep.
You, anything over seventy-five hundred feet, you can split up.
And seventy-five feet of furniture.
Yeah.
No, so I'm talking about individual lots that are held in common ownership. Pre-existing non-conforming lots that were lawfully conforming at the time they were created. So I own two lots that are five thousand square feet, and I own them right side by side with each other. Those lots will merge if they come under the same ownership. If you have, if you have seventy-five hundred square feet, you can build on them individually, even with burgers.
If you had two seventy-five hundred square feet?
Correct.
Okay, I get you.
You could build two houses.
Yes.
Yeah, you don't know how many of those we saw.
Up to three lots.
Hundreds of those.
Yep, they're all over.
I, well, I'm just saying, I sat there for, I don't know, ten, ten, eleven years, night after night after night. You know, well, that's my brother's lot, that's my mother's lot. The other piece also on this, with the Wendy's restaurant, this is going before the ZBA, so this may or may not set a precedent right up front, depending what happens. The ZBA will make a ruling, if they make a ruling positive, it sets the precedent.
So what's the question for tonight, Ken?
The question for tonight is whether or not you want to proceed with going to hearing on allowing restaurants to have drive-throughs in all commercial districts or only in the general commercial district by special permit? Or do you want to maintain the prohibition that's existing? In which case it's done by use variance.
I, excuse me, I for one don't, don't have enough information about the issue. Can't comment.
I don't understand the pros and cons. Are you expecting a flood of fast food restaurants?
I can only explain by what's happened with the property in front of Walmart, with the Robinsons in particular. They've lost one, two, I believe, three potential clients because of this issue.
Right.
And obviously, the rest of West Wareham going down, you know, fifty-eight and stuff, there is a lot of potential for different businesses. The Wareham Pharmacy is probably pretty ripe for the next one. But it also ends up, even in East Wareham, we have a lot of, you know, what I'll call derelict properties. You're gonna have this issue. There's more and more businesses looking to have drive-throughs as part of their business. You see it all over the country now.
We won't be able to, how will you be able to maintain that same standard on the Cranberry Highway as far as having to discharge onto the property? I can't think of a single lot of land, except Benny's, that you could discharge onto the.
Well, I don't see any safe way to do it, other than divided highway or signalized intersection.
Right, agree. But I, my feeling is, it's been seven years for, since the prohibition. It's been a while, you know?
Yeah, just about longer than this.
I would like to hear some public input, other than the people that are lobbying to put these in here. I, I would like to hear from the other business owners and residents in these communities to, to see what their feeling is on this.
Well, I mean, just this proposal that's in front of ZBA now. You know, to get to this site, you have to come through a signalized intersection at Toby. Now, this other intersection that you mentioned earlier is rather confusing right now. But that could be rectified with another signal. But you're not gonna have lane crossings of Cranberry Highway to get into this site.
Well, no, don't say that, George. You can go to Walmart right now, if you sit there for ten minutes, I guarantee you'll see three cars come out on twenty-eight exit and take a left.
But this exit does not lend itself to that. And, well, you could fix that by continuing the raised median down to the traffic light.
But you can't, you can't control that, that's state. Right? State controls that.
Yeah, but if they put that part of their plan, go, go to Mastat.
Where is the subject? Right there, that's where the restaurant's supposed to be.
But that's the one, remember when the Mayflower Bank went in there, the curb cut, right after BB's? The state put that ripple in there to deter people from coming out and making.
No, they did it as part of their site plan, and then the state came in and cut it off.
The state's the one that made us put that, that island in there, George, if you remember that. They wanted that curb cut on twenty-eight. Anybody buys a property, a curb cut on twenty-eight is, is an asset to the property. You know, that, that's part of, part of the money. People want to get in and out of there quick. And, and I agree with you, when you say that, the intersection at Walmart is a nightmare. You're being nice. I mean, which lane do you belong in? I got, I got cut off in there the other day in my company truck.
Well, I've seen you drive, Mike.
Well, that's true, I'm getting older. And, you know, I didn't, I don't remember putting my hand up in a bad gesture, but they gotta call Monday morning at work.
Well, the issue, if you're, if you're coming from Mayflower and turning left into Toby, there are three lanes at that, at, at that throat of Toby right now.
Two of them.
Months ago, nobody was turning left into Beaton's old property.
Yeah.
Now, you have cars turning left, and you have cars coming out of Walmart. And the cars coming out of Walmart are crossing three lanes and taking a left-hand turn. Pretty soon, you're gonna put a Wendy's there, they're gonna go across five lanes to go get their cheeseburger right now.
Yeah, you, you been in Walmart shopping all day with your kids? They want a cheeseburger, what are you gonna do?
Right.
We, we went through that scenario when the mobile station came in. McDonald's wanted to go there.
That's right.
And one of the, one of the problems we had was, there was no place for trucks, cars with trailers, couldn't go in there. Says, we'll put a sign there, say no trailers allowed. You know how many trucks are parked up on twenty-eight in the morning, trailers? I mean, that place is a mess. Coming farms down the street, Charlotte Furnace, same thing. They post it, them trucks park right there, they park on Charlotte Furnace. You go down Charlotte Furnace Road, you like driving on an alleyway, because trucks are on both sides. You know, because they, the local trucks know they can't park on twenty-eight. The out-of-town drivers come, hey, they don't give a shit, they just park on twenty-eight, jump across the road, eat what they want and go. You know, how do you police it?
So, do you want to take an article to town meeting or public hearing? You can always pull it, even if it gets on the warrant. Do you want to, do you want to have a more detailed discussion and continue the discussion about drive-throughs for restaurants?
Because that, because that, when you, when you say the, the West Wareham people, yeah, there's, there's gonna be a lot of them over there grumbling and screaming. They don't want you to cut the trees down for the mall.
Well, I'm just stating what Claire writes in her, the West Wareham.
But, but like I said, there, there's a lot of potential property, and like you said, the old Wareham Pharmacy is, that place is just waiting for something to happen. And it's gonna, it's gonna be like, you know, it's gonna go right up the street, all the way to twenty-eight, I mean fifty-eight. They made a comment a long time ago, you know, push all that stuff to Rochester, you know, over the line. That's not the thing to do, it's, you know, it's progress, it's gonna happen, it's just a matter of time. You get the auto center, the old restaurant was there before. That's all prime property, it's just a matter of time.
There is a, there's major road reconstruction. To even get to the Wareham Pharmacy, you're down to one lane again, to get down there.
You got, you got, you got the trailer park, Great Hill?
We, we don't want to repeat what happened in East Wareham.
Exactly.
In West Wareham.
So, I, I don't, I think that, A, a public hearing will be healthy to put the, you know, prospective business folks on notice. There's gonna be a huge infrastructure investment if you want this building here. And, and they need to hear that, along with those conditions. I don't think, I don't think it's right to continue to have a prohibition. This is not how we should operate here, because there's, there's, there's potential jobs, there's potential tax revenue, right? There's solutions that we want in this town. Just to, just to stonewall it, I think, A, we can make it work, but you're gonna be spending three times the amount of money to sell your cheeseburgers right now.
Well, that's Georgia's strategy, to put the criteria down, to specify what you want out of the, your drive-throughs.
Somebody's gonna have to pay for that road reconstruction, it can't be the taxpayers of this town. I mean, Walmart doesn't benefit me at all, other than buying toilet paper. Well, what's Wal, actually, cards on the table, what's Walmart got to do with any of this property over here? Walmart came, they got their permits, they put them through, what, a two-year process? It, it, it was like a bunch of romper room. And they got their permit, they got their reviews, they, they did their construction. This guy, this guy here, if you've got problems, deal with them. But everybody keeps wrapping Walmart into this and fix the road. Walmart did his job. Someone else is building now, let them do it. It's the same thing when, when, when the sewer, when the pump stations had it. All of a sudden, Walmart had a kick in, I don't know how many thousands of dollars for a pump station that they had nothing to do with.
That was a hundred thousand dollars, man.
Or whatever it was, Alan, you know, my point was, everybody had a gun to their head because they were the big boy in town. Well, the big boy came, he built this store, he's happy, he's selling all his fishing rods. And, and these guys are coming down here now building. They got their permit, no sooner do they get their permit, they come in, they want to extend this building, they want to extend that building. But they don't want to do anything out on the.
anything out on the road. Nail these guys, and, and stop bringing the other developer into it, is my, my two cents. It just, it just leads for bad feelings. They mindin' their business, they're across the street.
The proposed bylaw would potentially benefit the other corner also.
The other corner's taken a beating, that guy's trying to get that land leased for how many years now, and he, and he can't do it because of, of the, the West Wareham.
Well, I don't know what kind of restrictions Walmart might have on him.
Well, that's the other thing. Walmart, Walmart has restrictions, what type of business could be in front of them? So, it is part of it. But let's face it, if they wanted a bank, if they wanted a restaurant, they'd get it.
To answer your question, I think we should make a run at this and see if we can come up with something that people are comfortable with.
I think Mark's absolutely right, you don't get a good public hearing on that, you're gonna, you're going to perhaps open yourself up for everybody up and down that strip gonna come in and say, oh yeah, I want a drive-through, so...
You know, we may bring this forward and we get sent the message, no, we don't want drive-throughs. If that's the case, then we got it.
Then the people spoke, yes?
We got our mission.
So, put the lightning rod out there and see what happens.
Yeah, I mean, six people are gonna show up, it's not like we're gonna be fighting back an army here, right?
Don't be so sure of that.
Well, let's, I, I'd welcome the room to be full.
Well, it's just like the gas station convenience store, they made it quite clear they don't want more gas station convenience stores in town.
Yep.
That's...
All right. Next on the, on the list was the kennels and dogs and the, and the stables. You know, I, when I started looking into this, I found that it really isn't a, there isn't really a zoning issue in the kennels, because there's a state license requirement for, for dogs or more. A kennel license is, and they don't specify difference between commercial and small or personal, just if you got, if you have four dogs or more, you have to get a kennel license. So, I, I think it's, it's pretty straightforward, I don't know if there's really a need to advance anything on the, the dogs.
Did a lot of this come through your office, the kennel stuff?
Yeah, yeah, we do, we've got it pretty firm up.
It's a pretty emotional issue as well, too.
It is.
So... So, does this clear up what you'd need to do?
This would help clear it up a little bit more.
Okay, well, put it out there.
By having, this is in the general bylaws, the definitions.
If it helps, put it out there. Everything you can clean up makes life easier when they come in, so...
The other was on riding stables, and, and that wasn't really, uh... I, I couldn't find a, a clear issue here as well either, but the suggestion was that we match the definition of riding stable with the state law. So, that includes horses, it includes all equines, and has any structure or land used for, for a stable, including riding trails, trail rides, drives, and hay rides or pony rides, as a commercial venture. It'd be defined as a riding stable.
Well, where does that leave you with recreational then?
I'm not sure what you mean by recreational, because if, if it's not for hire...
It, it's recreational.
Yeah, it's recreational.
I got a horse in my backyard, I think that's what George is kicking the bucket down the street here for.
Well, the, the problem we have with the existing, well, that wasn't really the problem, was people would come in and say, well, this is just a hobby. Well, we didn't differentiate between hobby and commercial in the existing bylaw. What we're lacking is, um, it's not defined anywhere what a stable is, how much area you have to provide per animal, what kind of protection. It's buried somewhere in a statute, maybe not in the building code, maybe it's under the Board of Health. But we don't have anything to pull the two together, so as a result, stable permits were issued all over town, without regard to zoning or, or neighborhoods or anything, you know? A classic example was over here with, I think it's a, I don't think it's a 30,000 square foot lot, and between the house and the paddock, it's, the entire yard is...
The horse is licking the navel's shingles.
And there's really no structure to protect the animal, there's no barn, there's just a lean to.
Well, it actually is in the bylaw right now, article three in definition says that to, to have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a horse, because that's what we're talking about, to have a horse, whether you have a rink or not, whether it's to ride or not, it's, it's actually very broad, but it says that you have to have at least five acres or more, that's the only way to buy a right, less than five acres requires a special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals.
Over five acres is state statute.
Correct.
So, what happens with the existing permits? They're protected?
It, it really all depends how long they've had that, I mean, existing permits that are out there now were issued by the Board of Health, uh, under a different regulation. I, I mean, we could go around under zoning and go after everybody that has a horse, if they've had a horse over 10 years, that's unenforceable, so...
So, so how do you prove the horse has been there over 10 years? They dig up a horseshoe?
Sure. I mean, it's...
Yeah.
What's happened in the past is in the past, we have to look at moving forward the right way.
Yeah, the, I think the main thing was inconsistencies, you know, they, they granted one, uh, I don't know if it was a variance or what, under a veterinary hospital.
Well, I don't remember the veterinary hospital, I remember the one lady came in.
It's about as much veterinary hospital as my truck.
So, so we believe if we adopt the state regulations, we'll get this on track? We don't need to be more stringent than the state?
Well, we, we already have what's consistent with the state, which is that, that you can regulate something that's less than five acres, agricultural or, or equine. And we have as a right, in accordance with the state law, for anything that's more than five acres. That's in the existing regulations already, and that's in conformance with the state law.
Yeah, when we went through the last time, we recognized the five acre break.
I have nothing to say on this, because I, I probably could identify one horse in this whole town, I just don't know where they are.
You don't get out too much. You don't get out too much. I'll tell you, there's a...
The only time I ever see a horse is coming down, uh, because I'm over in West Wareham, is it? And I think they're coming out of Rochester, actually, down County Road.
So, is there anything you want to take forward on, on riding stables?
What are on there? Eyeing it out. We have a big mule population coming down, any unicorns?
We'll put down the law, Mr. ...
They'll show up, they'll show up when the marijuana distribution...
Look a unicorn, man.
Time to go.
Does the horse smoke too?
Yeah, it is, I gotta get up early. What else you got?
The referral on the Wendy's restaurant. Are there any comments that you want to provide to the Board of Appeals?
Yeah, I, I don't think any decision can be made until those traffics, whoever's next up on the traffic study, Walmart owns this one now, then Wareham Marketplace, there was a traffic study mandated for that? Or not?
The, any traffic study that was done was without a fast food restaurant included in the mix, so...
Right.
They would have to repeat that, or come up with a creative way to say they'll be going increasing traffic.
Well, they all do.
That would be, uh, I know it's kind of a short cue to the highway, but I think some way to address that demolition derby of an intersection would be a good idea, traffic light.
One of the things that we had considered, I, when I was talking with Mark, was the idea of, of having a summit meeting, where we get Walmart and Jay Donigan, who's the developer of Marketplace and the owner of the Wareham Crossing, and to talk about traffic and how it may affect, be affecting their business.
And Robinsons.
And Robinsons, yeah. So, have a discussion about the, what's needed and...
With Wareham Crossing also?
With Wareham Crossing also, because there's an opportunity to have a lane...
Get some connectivity?
Yeah.
Good idea.
Even if it's just better connectivity on 28th, on Cranberry Highway.
Well, if you could, if you could...
On the other side of the bridge?
If you could connect these and the possible package store property, that would eliminate people going back out on the road just to go down a driveway. Keep internal circulation connected, that works well. Although, this Paco mod is dizzying. They did, they did do a good job with this secondary...
Access.
You know, it is pretty directional, you, you're not gonna...
They're keeping it on their property right now, so...
Well, that was the problem with Mayflower Bank, half of that island was in the state layout, so when they widened it, it disappeared, now it's, you lost that wedge to make people go right. Now, one of the things that we, one of the issues we had, and it was either with this corner or this corner, this was a pinch point for Mass Highway, where they couldn't get their four-foot bicycle lane in.
They made a compromise on that.
Right at the Toby Turn.
Right.
Went down a few streets in Cambridge, they're letting cars drive again. Bikes everywhere, now they let cars on the road, pretty cool.
They made actual towings?
Yeah.
Well, Cambridge is a unique place anyway, so...
People's Republic of Cambridge, it's unbelievable. The money they spent on bike lanes and nonsense.
Always has been.
Well, are there any other comments you want to have on the Wendy's?
I mean, if they could straighten that layout out, they could continue that.
What that does is that, that makes a sharper corner, has smaller radius at the turn, at Toby Road.
Thing is, you get...
Went out of drive.
The thing is, when you get to Toby Road, Toby Road is town, on 28th is state, you just remember when Beaton gave that property on the end. You had to go, it was two different takings.
Yeah, well, Beaton gave, Beaton gave the property so you could line up the road across the street. So, instead of being like that, now it's like that.
Well, which benefited them, because it saved them from doing it when they, their property moved. Yeah.
What's the question again?
Question is, what comments do you want to give to the Board of Appeals in their consideration of the use variance for the Wendy's Restaurant Drive-Thru?
Well, I think, we're mutually agreeing that a traffic study needs to be done, we can't even draw any type of conclusion on this without, A, the public hearing, do we want a drive-through? B, a traffic study?
Did they update the traffic study, when they submitted?
I was just looking through the materials, I didn't see a traffic study in the, in the file, a copy I have here. That doesn't necessarily mean that they didn't submit one. I don't see it in the, in the application materials for the variance.
Thing that would be looked at, it was mentioned back, the West Wareham group, was the potential builder on Bear Road. You got the old tire bond, you got MaxiGas, which we know is just a matter of time, you got BB's, there's quite a few, either businesses or properties. It all depends what goes in there, you know, it's gonna be the domino effect, one way down the street. The mall came, the mall was the seat of cancer of West Wareham, and that's what started the degradation of West Wareham, that's what the people were concerned about before. They said it's gonna become like East Wareham, well, basically it is, and it's just coming down the street, I mean, it's a moving freight train, you can't stop it.
Oh, it has to do with access and traffic and number of vehicles, number of people going by.
And I think something, if you look back in the notes way back, something was mentioned that some long-range planning should be looked at, what can we do to hit this, you know, let's prepare for it, what's gonna come, whether it's, you know, a third lane, a tuning lane or something. Because right after you leave, we'll pick on Walmart again, Walmart again, you go around that turn, by Wareham Market, then it pinches down again, even though you got the Peterbilt dealership, all that property on the other side, it gets kind of narrow when you're, you know, coming out of that trailer park, Great Hill is tough, and after that, it just becomes a total nightmare the rest of the way to 28th.
But I, but I think you, you've also recreated the same problem you have on the Cranberry Highway, where a major restriction is...
We've made the mistake... Well, yeah, we made the mistake once, how can we fix it? 28th, 28th, they've been talking years about putting it underground, that's gone away now, right?
Well, no one's gonna spend the money for it.
Well, it costs a lot to put it underground in the first place, and it costs the individual property owners money to reconnect.
Is what it is, you know?
Regarding this particular site, I would say, uh, that intersection needs to be looked at, either jointly with their neighbors or on their own.
Can I just get a que, why, why couldn't, because nothing's been built adjacent to Aldis. Why can't you push this thing down to the backside of that property? Why does it have to be here at this intersection?
You won't be with on Toby Road.
What's that?
It's not really connected to the intersection, it's, it's, its drive is internal to the site.
Visibility right there.
For the most part, the, the, the traffic on Toby Road pushes to the Cranberry Highway. When you come, when you are going to come out of this, you've got maybe four or five cars to the light, taking a right to the Cranberry intersection, and then you're gonna have almost a constant flow coming out right onto the Cranberry Highway.
That's gonna be regardless of whether Wendy's is there or not, though.
Yeah, but if you put Wendy's down here, you've got more room to queue, is what he's saying.
Where are they queuing, in front of the other buildings? Same difference. Queue around the Wendy's itself, or you queue in front of the, the Auto Zone?
No, when you're leaving the site, instead of coming out here and plugging up this intersection with cars trying to make a right.
Right. I'm saying, if you move the Wendy's from the corner to the back of the space, where do they queue?
I don't think you can do it in the back.
That's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm asking, is, is you'd be in front of the other properties?
Because you're gonna be able to drive around the whole facility, there's no room in that corner there for that.
You'll be running to people who are going on Aldis, and they don't have bags, they got all the stuff in their hands.
They have Aldis baskets, a cart's built with 25 cents a bag.
You gotta take it back to get your quarter back, you're leaving the parking lot.
George, what happened with that, with that property, though, did they get approval to extend the building and move the other buildings?
They haven't gotten that approval yet.
Good.
So, they haven't got the approval, and they're coming in with something like this already.
Well, that's, it's been in the works.
That, that particular site in the original proposal was, was for a drive-through bank, right? It was a crowd there for a bank.
A bank, yes.
The bank doesn't, doesn't warrant half of the queuing as a Wendy's would, would...
Right.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask, I, I wasn't here, what was the background for Claire Smith's email? She doesn't want drive-throughs over there, the West Wareham... No, there was a study from a West Wareham group, which Ken has the copy, which they did a study of, you know, future development, et cetera, for West Wareham, and the group that put it together was very direct, saying they didn't want to have what happened on East, basically, on the east part of Cranberry Highway, and they didn't want to have drive-through restaurants and McDonald's and all this other stuff, basically, at that time. That was, was that about 10 years ago, Ken? The date on that? It's gotta be, it's gotta be...
It was probably about, it was probably a little bit more.
Maybe 15?
Yeah, it was done by Howard Stein Hudson.
Yeah, they had a study done, you know, the local residents in that area, they're, they're comments. But there was nothing there. I mean, I think the electric company still had the property with the mallers.
Right.
I mean, so there wasn't anything developed down there. The problem is that you've got 195, 495, 25 at that intersection. That's where you're gonna have your development, at the end of the day, no matter what.
Well, that's where it's gonna start. It's gonna spread out.
Yeah, of course. You know, and the state knows on Route 28, they're gonna have to somewhere down the line, extend the two-lane on each side all the way down to 58. It's gonna happen sooner or later because of the traffic flow.
The, the problem with that, when you get down further on 28, some of the houses, after the, some of the houses, the front doors are right on, right on the highway. Because you gotta remember, it was a, it was a primitive old two-lane road years ago.
You, you may see some state come in and take properties.
There's no...
It does happen.
There's no obligation to have these people's, these neighbors' voices heard, or...
Well, it will be if you do a public hearing on it. I, the problem I'm gonna say is gonna be is, right now, because there is, you know, a ZBA coming down. So depending how many people come in and complain about giving them a drive-thru, you know, say, it could, you know, just take care of the issue one way or the other. If the ZBA rule's okay to put a drive-thru, then, then you, it won't matter what anyone says at that point. Gate is open and the fox is in the hen houses, they say.
What, what direction is the ZBA leaning right now?
No idea.
Anyone know? The hearing is on Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
Indication is that they asked that the, that the, you consider an article for zoning that would provide relief for the prohibition?
They were looking for help. Simple as that.
Regarding this, I, I believe this board was pretty consistent with thinking that this site was overbuilt. And I wonder if it would be reasonable to have them give up this pat? Or is, or does that solve anything?
Which pad? Would you wanna put Wendy's?
The back stall.
Their little tiny snot in the back?
Yeah, the, the photo processing kiosk.
That's a photo processing kiosk.
Or a Verizon store.
This is 4,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's a pretty good size. Yeah, it's, it's something. And, and there's a traffic generation, if, if traffic generation is what your issue is, then reducing one is going to reduce the traffic. And by the way, you, you had previously commented on the extension of the, of the buildings on, along Toby Road and, and suggested that that was inappropriate for the... You've already, you're already on record saying you didn't like it.
When are they gonna answer that?
At this hearing, they're gonna be...
This one Wednesday night?
Yeah, they're gonna, it's a combined hearing of the use variance and the, the extension.
Are they in this room, too, zoning?
Yeah, they're in this room.
They're sitting in their seats.
Get here, will we?
So any other comments that you wanna pass on to ZBA on this?
Well, what's our biggest comment again is to push it to public hearing, right?
Well, not, not in the zoning change, but on this application for Wendy's. If you want to see a bit more traffic analysis, be supportive.
I think the order of things is traffic analysis, then public hearing, so the public can hear what the traffic outcome is. Otherwise, they're blind to the magnitude of the problem.
Still need to build out. Still need to build out for that whole stretch. Oh, yeah, it's, it's... You gotta be done, you know. You know, all you're doing is putting Band-Aids, going down, like putting little post-its in this one, that one.
Well, there was a car study done. ADM did one. I haven't seen it.
ADM did one? I don't know if I've seen that.
Down at Charlotte Furnace Road.
Was it B dot?
It was, there was plans for a traffic light down there, et cetera, at a certain point.
Oh, yeah, I haven't seen that, then.
That's a tough intersection.
Yes, it is.
With, with the upgrade of Charlotte Furnace, that's a big shortcut coming from Plymouth, cutting cross-country. You probably save probably four or five miles. It's a fast road.
Well, that's why, you know what? That's why the neighbors complain.
It's the same time going the other way.
People don't think that, though. You know, human, human nature is the shortest point between one point and the other, a straight line. And that's what they do. I mean, they're brutal. I don't know, how many people I know in the last six months have got rear-rended or damn near run over at Charlotte Furnace and 28. If you pull out of Charlotte Furnace to go across, you've got the, it's not a deceleration lane, the dead lane on the right. The paths around you cut your way over again. At least they think they're on the road for whatever reason.
Excuse me, Ken, isn't the interchange and going up the road a ways on 28, wasn't all that property? Didn't we designate all that for, you know, economic development with SERPET, et cetera, in the state? Something happened like a month or so ago, two months ago.
I'm not sure.
There was, there was a program where we, they designated a certain, on the road, you know, for transportation and development, et cetera, for that section.
Many, a few years back for South Coast Rail, they do it again?
No, this was just recently where we, remember you're trying to get certain properties to agree to, you know, for ease of, you know, development as far as applications, et cetera.
Oh, the 43D?
Yeah. But that section that we're talking about, where the development's going is, was included in that 43.
Oh, yeah, they looked at it. The SERPET had done the study and done an analysis of the, of the corridor.
So there's already a program in place, because we passed 43D. I think, I don't know if it's come back from the AG's office, but that whole area is gonna be expedited, you know, permitting and stuff. There's a whole program for that. It's already in place.
Okay. The traffic study. And, and that there's, there's more square footage than seems appropriate for the site. Is what the comments I hear from you guys.
Yeah, and I think some sort of cooperation would fix in this intersection.
With the Walmart entrance drive across from the Wareham Marketplace drive.
Yeah, I think that the two businesses, the two complexes, have to sit down and figure it out, because Walmart is required by contract with us to look at the situation.
I have, I have no problem with that, but, but Walmart was all built and, and occupied, and these guys came along, put the driveway, probably everybody complains about the driveway.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying this...
But... I'm just saying that, that, you know, Walmart's got a good, he's gonna say, "Yeah, I'll do all the traffic studies you want, but you guys built all this after the facts."
But they knew going in that they, they dodged that traffic light. They, they avoided that. That's why they agreed to a, a look back.
Yeah, they, they did, they should have actually redone all of Toby Road all the way down, made it wider, et cetera, but the town didn't go after it. The state did make them do the Route 28 work, and then the town had them do the, you know, Toby Road work, but only so far. Didn't go far enough down.
Enough excitement for one night, Dave.
Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Well, you got all the information you need?
Yeah, I did. Thank you very much.
Dave, your, your task is to count stables. You want to know how many horses we got in town.
You know he's gonna find there's more horses asses than there are horses. Yeah, this is yours. Uh, let's see.
We done, Mr. James?
You haven't made a motion yet.
Oh, we did.
Did you? Mike, you made a motion, didn't you?
Yeah, I did.
Anybody second it?
Second.
Want to discuss it? Hold on a favor. Opposed? Adjourn at 9:20.